Commissioner. Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Yeah.
We do have a forum. Uh, I've got several citizens on the podium. If you stand forward to the podium, you've got three minutes. Uh, first one is Brian Ashbury.
Brian Ashbury, uh, 1122 West Dumplin Valley Road. Here to speak about the budget. This is something that y'all do every year and it seems to cause a lot of consternation for all parties and concern. So, I mean, my suggestion is you're gonna have to do, go at this three ways. One is you're gonna have to try to cut the budget a little bit. You're gonna have to maybe bump up the property tax a little bit and maybe do the wheel tax a little bit to get this thing to work for you, for us. That's about all I have to say is good luck for you.
Thank you. Michael Jesse.
I'm with the Solomar Conservation District. They had me come in for, for getting raised. They said, Pete, um, what I need to...
Is that leaves for personnel committee on the complete budget, didn't I?
Yes.
So that's later than I...
You can speak to it later tonight when it comes if, during the budget, if that's your wish. Okay.
Is there any way to turn the volume up?
Just speak, just speak into the microphone.
All right, William Roland.
My name is Bill Roland. I live on Lake Shore Drive here in Dandridge. And, uh, following up on the...
Would you give your complete address, please?
I'm sorry, 855 Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you.
In Dandridge. Uh, following up on the petition that we submitted to last committee meeting, I just want to say again that an 11% tax increase is simply too much for many of the families in the county to be able to absorb. Even a 5% tax increase would be very painful for many of the families. Um, and so we are asking the committee to take the time to really dig into the budget, uh, all of the requests, and find the right combination of budget cuts to balance the budget, uh, to continue paying down the county debt without having to increase taxes. Now, I realize that whether it's 11% or any kind of a percentage, uh, cut to the budget spread evenly across the departments would be unfair to some departments and would even create chaos for some of them. Um, and so for that reason, again, we're urging the committee to take the time, and I know it takes a lot of time, to really dig into the budget requests enough detail to find the combination of cuts. And that probably means a lot of small cuts, maybe a few larger cuts to bring the budget into balance, continuing to pay down the debt without increasing taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Gould, Gould.
Hello, my name is Dennis Gould, the 1626 Kinder Lane in Dandridge. Uh, at this point, I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Joseph Maljiri, who has a statement that needs a little bit more time than the three minutes. So I'd appreciate, uh, you letting me do that. Thank you.
Mr. Cho, we'll get you next. If he's here. Cho Maljiri. Cho Maljiri.
Joe Maljiri, 576 Joshua Drive, Dandridge. 2015, I addressed the county commission about broadband. Uh, I had no need to because I had broadband and I thought everybody did, but 30% of our county didn't. So I advocated on behalf of those people. Today, I'm here to report on research into, uh, wages because I advocated last week on behalf of the people for the library. And when doing the research, I found out that a lot of our county employees are, uh, lower than they should be in wages. So I did some research and I'm here to report this very quickly. And I've made a copy of this available to the standard banner, so if in case any of you want a copy, you're welcome to have it. Uh, this is from government salaries dot com. It says the highest salary in Jefferson County in 2023 was 188,178. That's where our attorney, that costs money. Okay, the number of employees in Jefferson County in 2023 was 534. The average annual salary was 31,989 and the median salary was 30,470. Jefferson County average salary is 32% lower than the USA average and the median salary is 30% lower. In the state of Tennessee, we have 36,500 odd state employees. Their median salary is 44,883 and, uh, their average and their median is 47,000. So what I'm saying is that Tennessee, the hourly wage average is 1756 and in Jefferson County, it's 1538. The median county, uh, the median hourly wage in the state of Tennessee is $22. We are at 1465. According to the living wage calculator from MIT, somebody living in Jefferson County as a single adult needs $19.27 per hour for a living wage. A maintenance technician in Jefferson County pays around $15 an hour, $600 a week. An apartment around here costs, uh, 1,023 or 1.7 weeks' salary. The base pay for this role in Tennessee is 2221 or 51,000 a year with overtime of 6,500. A landfill worker in Jefferson County earns about $11 an hour or $1,906 a month, so he pays roughly 2.3 weeks' pay for rent. A sanitation worker in Tennessee earns about $706 a week, so he's in that same boat. A library assistant earns 1127 an hour and in Tennessee, the range is 1671, uh, per hour. Just about every position that I looked up under government salaries dot com, which includes every person being paid in Jefferson County, there's a corresponding job description on the employee website or on the employee site set so we can compare it. And every position I compared, Jefferson County salaries were markedly lower. As a business consultant, I want to share this insight. I know what you guys are up against and managing is always a challenge, no matter where you do it. But when you're budget constrained, it's very almost impossible. But I want you to consider this, every time you try to fill a position, there's associated cost with finding, interviewing, offering and hiring new person and bring them on board. And it costs almost a year's salary to go through that process after you've lost a person. Second, the people that you, uh, have to use in from your office to backfill for the employee who's gone has to do this on their own time with a lot of stress and sometimes overtime. So imagine a county department manager's reaction when a county commissioner says, let's just cut the budget 10% while earlier that same day, a prospect that the department manager just made an offer to laughs openly at the thought of taking a job at 25% off market rate. When the roles go unfilled and impact the county's ability to deliver services, and I predict that the approaches you're taking in the budget process pretty much guarantee that, who amongst you in this, uh, committee are going to stand up and say, my fault? I haven't included here the impact on the children of the county, employees, many of whom go without decent meals. They certainly go without parental guidance because their parents are working a second job to make ends meet. Children grow up economically constrained households, perform less well in school, and their outlooks are tempered accordingly. Don't take my word for it. I ask you to visit our county offices or visit a landfill and ask our employees what the life, what life's like on their block. And I'll close with this. Every day, citizens of Jefferson County go about their business not thinking about the services.
Mr. Cho, your time's up. If it's really, really quick.
It's, I just got two sentences, okay? Basically, it's this. People don't know that they're receiving all the services they get here for six tenths of 1% of their property value. That's what the tax is. And I don't know that you know that either, but the tax rate in the state of Tennessee is 1.08 for, based on property value and ours is 1.58.
Next would be Daniel Hensley. Billy John Kurten.
Billy John Kurten, some of you know me, some don't. I'm not here speaking on behalf of my fire department. I'm at 711 Murph Road, Jersey City. I wanted to talk to you about the fire budgets. There's roughly 200 firemen, rescue personnel, volunteers in this county. And, you know, if you had to buy the trucks, if you had to pay the payroll, if you had to just pay the retirement, it'd be a lot more than what we're asking. I lost assistant chief I had for 28 years to cancer. I've got a captain out right now with cancer. In 2021 August, I was about to buy the farm because of my, I got my liver poisoned. 38 years of doing this volunteering fire. But I was lucky and I got a liver transplant. And my dumb ass went back and I'm still fighting fire because I'd do it again because we got a habit. It's too late for us old guys. You know, if we, if we've done got the cancer, all the stuff, you know, everything's manufactured nowadays. It's bad. When it burns, it's worse. And it's too late for us. But my new guys, my young guys, I want them protected and they've got to have this equipment, turnout gear, and it costs money. And, you know, I know I wouldn't want your all's jobs, but if you're going to cut some more, stop treating the fire and rescue like we're stepchildren of the county, you know. I ain't got nothing against dogs and cats, but they're getting more than we get. I believe. And Mr. Snodgrass, you're from the third district of White House. I had a very good friend that I fought fire with for 40 years, Mike Rowminds, that this, we just buried him a few months ago. So, you know, there's a lot of us out there that have give at all and we, we want your help. We don't want to be cut 10%. We need your help. And as far, I want to speak a little bit on the wheel tax track quick. I've got like eight vehicles. I hate to damn wheel tax sticker, but I've got one farm, 74 acres. I got another and it's 73 acres. I've got eight acres of some commercial property that just sits there and I pay taxes on it every year. So, you know, I've got rental houses and, you know, one of the commissioners, Marcus, and I like Marcus, he's a good man. He said, pass it on to your renters. They're struggling like the rest of us, but you gotta do something. But we done screwed the pooch on the wheel tax. Thank you.
All right, is there any other citizens won't speak or fill one out that I didn't get? All right.
Go up there.
Up here, three minutes. Name and address. And if you would, fill one of these out so they can have the record.
You mean when I get done or right now?
Yes, when you get done.
I don't have your job. I relaxed here. This is a great place to live. Like last time, you guys got to think of us and I have as much compassion for people as anybody. I got kids, grandkids like anybody else. But we're $46 million in debt. It ain't the time to keep raising these property taxes. Uh, and, and everybody needs to make a, a good wage. The guys that work for the city, they need the insurance. Talking about cutting that, you don't need to cut that. They need it. But $46 million in debt, guys, Jesus, that's crazy. Just think about the people here. That's how I got to say it.
Before you leave, name and address.
Dan Heinz, 1341 Sugar Fork Road, Dandridge.
You need to fill one of these out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next you have, uh, two sets of minutes. Quarterly meeting, special call meeting. What's the pleasure of committee? Mr. Solomon makes the motion. Mr. Walker seconded. Is there any discussion or any question? Seeing them proceed to vote. Voting on both of them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. As far as what we're doing, if we could, let's handle the budget amendments first, if you would, Miss Jesse, uh, because when it comes time, we will have to recess. So let's get those out of the way first, uh, and then we'll move on to the other business. And then we'll just recess and we'll come back then after we finish the special call meeting to finish the rest of the budget meeting, if that's, if there's no objections.
Okay, so the first one is general fund 101, number 25. This is on me. I accidentally proposed to move the funds last time you all met. You approved it. I appreciate that. Found out the day late, dollar short kind of situation. The funds were supposed to stay in general fund 101. So we actually never moved them to the opioid funds. Um, this is just a reversal. So this is reversing what I asked you all to approve last time. Um, you'll see another one on fund 121. It's the same thing.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Solomon. Motion's made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes.
The next one is general fund 101 amendment number 26. This is using fund balance of $74,151.84 and it's using reserve totaling $499.25. The first item is, um, we received cost for detention costs that we are required to pay. Normally, we try to budget low for this and hope that, um, we don't have these costs. However, we're trying to plan ahead through year end and there are some juveniles that we will be paying for. So this is $10,000 of fund balance. The next one is using, um, the county clerk's titling fees that he has collected. We did not budget those, so we're budgeting just this small amount and that's helping him purchase a new phone system for his new office as well as the satellite office. The third one is using fund balance of $10,000. We also received an invoice that we are required to pay. It's for evaluation and testing. Um, this was a citizen that was, um, that went to a mental facility and we are required to pay this. It was ordered by a judge in our county. Uh, item number four is where we eliminated comp time and we're now paying overtime. We're cleaning it up through the end of April and the total use of fund balance is $54,151.84. You've got item five and six on the next page. Item five is using reserves for register fees for a printer cartridge. Um, item six is just moving funds around for additional money on jail food supplies.
What's the pleasure of committee? Mr. Solomon. Mr. Walker. Is there any questions? Any discussion? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You need a roll call on this one.
Chairman Scarlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorton? Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Snodgrass? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Solomon? Commissioner Douglas? Commissioner Drury?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
So that's 10-0, so that passes. The next one is our opioid fund 121, item number five or amendment number five. There are two items. The first item is the same thing. That's my reversal. The second item is receiving, uh, our second year direct county abatement funds that we did receive, um, I believe at the first of May.
What's the pleasure of committee? Mr. Solomon, Mr. Douglas. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion. One abstention for calls, please. Mr. Johnson. Motion passes.
The next one is our highway 131 amendment number three. The first one is just bringing in insurance recovery funds. Oh, I'm sorry. It's where we purchased a new truck and we have additional insurance to pay for that truck. So they're just moving funds around to pay for that. The second item is to increase the trustee commission. It is running a little short this year. They suffer their revenue, so they're moving from their last thing line.
What's the pleasure of committee? Mr. Solomon. Mr. Reed. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes.
The next item is, um, we're going to the school general fund 141 amendment number 21. This was approved by school board on May 2nd. There's no use of fund balance or reserve balance.
Mr. Solomon, Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, the next one is federal fund 142 amendment number 10. This was approved by school board on May 2nd. Um, these items are amending funds that we just discovered that they will not be granting us towards that award. So they'll be shorting this amount that we thought we were having and that, that definitely includes item number one. That's the reason for amending the funds out.
What's the pleasure of the committee? Mr. Solomon. Mr. Douglas. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any questions? Any discussion? Seeing them proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes. Is that it, Miss Jesse?
Those are all the budget amendments.
All right. You have, uh, should have a new copy updated, uh, with all the stuff in?
Yes, sir. And there is an updated use of fund balance on that after adjusting the E911 cost of living. I, I failed to include that in the last budget, so, so we have included that now. So now your updated amount is $3,793,845.
All right. So that is our starting point. At our last meeting, we passed the remainders of the, remainder of the other budgets. This is the only one we've got left to deal with right now. And so we'll start on 101. What's the pleasure of committee?
I have a few questions and I've got a list of things, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Page one, 101, count 39,000, unassigned, unassigned, unassigned fund balance. Make sure I understand that, if you would, please. Are we using 3.79 million?
We cannot use it. We do not have it, but that's how I was showing it. I also sent another one following up. If we were to increase property tax 26 pennies, it would balance it at that point with just small usage of fund balance. Our fund balance is not 3.8 million dollars.
Well, I've got a comment around that. I'm, I'm not sure it's one you'll really appreciate or not sure our budget chairman will, but it's been clear that we can't use fund balance to budget in the budget because we got that letter last year. My line of thinking says, if we get a little bit stingy with our expenses and maybe we don't budget quite enough in some places, then we could pass a budget amendment down in the year to cover that. Would that, would you agree with that?
That's a loaded question. I don't have enough detail to answer.
That, that is a short-term gain, long-term loss.
Okay, okay. All right, moving on down.
The mayor's buddy down there at Nashville that he talks to.
We do pull out of fund balance sometime.
I understand, but if you, if you go in knowingly, they are not happy. She's got to justify that that is a good and true budget. She's got to sign for that.
Uh, still on page one, local option sales tax. Explain that to me, the increase.
Two and a half percent increase is what I have budgeted. Um, whatever I budget on local option sales tax increases the Board of Education maintenance of effort. So I'm not comfortable going above two and a half percent, just watching the trend and the path that it's going. I do think we might bring in a little bit more than two and a half percent, but I can't predict the future.
But that's basically revenue. Okay. Moving down, moving down page one, additional fees, titling, that looks like a new expense in amount of 49,000. Explain that to us.
That is new revenue.
Okay.
So it's new revenue and that is revenue that we just amended in about $5,400 of that. We did not budget it this year. It was new revenue. It's a revenue that our county clerk is collecting, but it's revenue that our county clerk keeps what he's collected each year. It has to go into a restricted reserve. So it's not anything that we could use to budget an additional position, let's say in the finance department. It strictly has to be used under the county clerk's office.
Okay, on page two, uh, SRO, other state grants, SRO grant. There's 900,000 budgeted, whereas I believe last year, this current fiscal year, the state's paying for the SROs.
Same thing. So the state spent us $900,000 this year.
Okay, that's not a new expense.
Not, no, no, no.
Okay.
That's revenue.
Making sure. Uh, DUI, other direct federal revenue, THSO DUI grant, overtime. There's a $10,000 increase on that. What's that for? It's a GL account.
We, uh, it's 47990.
Yes. Yep.
We're receiving an additional $10,000 on that grant for next year. So that's revenue. Your expenditure side will have the same cost center DUI on it and it'll be under the sheriff's department, five four one one zero. And it'll be under overtime.
Okay, page four. GL five one five oh oh dash five two four, election commission, staff development, new expense, I assume, of nine thousand.
We moved everything to, to go by the correct chart of accounts. A lot of people were utilizing the travel line, which is three fifty-five. And it should have been utilized under five twenty-four, staff development. That should be for conferences, training, reimbursements for per diem meals, anything like that. So a lot of things you'll see, if you look under his travel.
Went down.
It reduces nine thousand.
Okay.
And we moved it to five twenty-four. You'll see that on a lot of departments.
Page five, county buildings, medical insurance. I know there's always an increase in healthcare costs, but forty-eight percent seems to be way higher than a lot of the other departments' percentages.
We have no control over that. If someone had left that had single coverage and someone was hired that opted for family coverage, that could be it. My understanding is there's an opening position, we have to, we have to budget for family coverage at that point.
I understand.
It could come in lower.
Yeah, you done answered another one I had on my list. Page nine, county, it's GL five two five zero zero one six nine, county clerk's office, part-time personnel, eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollar increase.
It was seventy-five hundred dollars that it was increased. And then the three point two percent cost of living on top of that. And that was increased due to the excess revenue that he's been bringing in. He more than offsets the increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to speak to it if it would be in order.
I'm fine with that.
Are you good with that answer, or you need Mr. Frank?
I'm good with the answer, but I'm fine with him speaking, if he wants to speak.
Go ahead, if you would, Mr. Frank.
Several years ago, we reduced our part-time pay to add a position in the office. And, you know, with our motor vehicle transactions are continually on the rise. Every other transaction we do in the office is on the rise. And looking at a way, I would love to step before you today and say I want a full-time personnel, but I know it's just not possible this year. So my proposal would be go part-time, a little more part-time money to justify getting somebody in there. And then next budget year or two, hopefully transition them to full-time if we can. That's the thought process behind it, if we can get it approved this year. Got some information on data of our motor vehicle increases over the last several years, as well as other transactions in the office. Be happy to share with you if you'd like.
Are you good, Ms. Dockery?
Yes.
Okay.
Page twelve, juvenile court, other salaries and wages. Looks like a new expense of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So that's not necessarily a new expense, it is to their department. We had it under general sessions last fiscal year. We moved it midway through the year under juvenile. And this person is only being budgeted for half the year because the grant ends December twenty-third.
Page thirteen, sheriff's department deputies, one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollar increase, is that, what's that?
Eleven percent increase. So that is not all the cost of living right there. Because cost of living is three point two percent that I put in. So without researching that one right there, I believe he had some positions that were under the cost grant that he's absorbed under his regular deputies. And they also. I don't want to speak on behalf of him, he is here.
Well, could you just put that on a list to check with him and maybe if we don't get it resolved tonight at our next reading?
Sure.
Sheriff Coffee?
Oh, he's here.
There are no new positions.
Could, could you speak to this? Mr. Dockery's got a question on the budget. Please.
I'm going to hear it's your deputy positions. You know, we did the head count and make sure that we had everyone who posted them in the account. He's saying it's more than the four percent increase right there, eleven percent on the deputies. And off the top of my head, I do not know why it's that amount, but, and I can at least say it's there. No, they're not, they've not added any positions at all, so.
Yeah, every little bit helps. If it's, if we need to adjust it from eleven percent to three point two to be in line with every other department, then. Sheriff's Department, other salaries and wages, violent crime intervention fund grant. That's sixty-one thousand, so is that revenue as well? That's a grant?
It is offset with that grant.
On page fourteen, and it may just be moved, needed to be shown separately, but on a lot of the sheriff's department employees, social security, state retirement, life insurance, medical insurance, a lot of that's showing up. Well, yeah, showing up, I believe, as a new expense this year.
Those are SRO. If you see the, there's a subobject that says SRO after it.
Yes.
That's why, because we re-categorize and we have to have that for the recording.
Page sixteen, we've got three hundred thousand in there for vehicles. And I know we didn't pay for them out of budget last year, I don't think it was.
It was zero last year.
Could we get an explanation on that three hundred thousand, what it provides and why we need it?
I'll let the sheriff speak on behalf of that, but I can tell you what the costs are adding up. It's five vehicles at fifty thousand dollars, that's off of state contract, and fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle equipment, which is ten thousand dollars per vehicle. So that equals three hundred thousand dollars. The ARPA funds did absorb that for us last year. And I gave a warning that it would be hitting general fund again, so this is why it's coming back.
Can we, is there no way we can reuse the existing equipment without buying ten thousand dollars worth of new equipment for each car?
It's too, it's the cages and things.
Okay. Yeah.
He can speak on behalf of the need for the vehicles, though. That's under his department.
Okay.
Yes, it is opportunities any. I spoke with Jessie earlier in the week. We, we received another grant, it's probably in there somewhere, about mental health transports. Well, we had abundance left over from it. And one of the options we had was to buy a vehicle out of it, which we're in the process of doing. So I had informed her, I think on Friday or this morning, warned that we were going to reduce that from two, from three hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. So two of the vehicles. Of course, we'll be replacing that one that's coming in. And then the other vehicle, we're going to squeeze it out. So just ask it for three in the, in the budget. And the, the problem is, with all the older vehicles we have, the vehicles change. They're wider, they're, and all that when you buy the equipment for me, that's what's just outrageous. And we could use the existing, but the adaptive kits that they want us to buy is the same price of buying a new one. So why would you buy adaptive kit with a cage that's fifteen years old when you could just go ahead and buy a new one? Because you're not, you're not saving any money by doing that, so.
Congratulations, you're the first one to find money to cut tonight.
A hundred thousand don't seem like a whole lot, we've got three, four, five.
I've already done it to budget, so it's a done deal.
Page twenty, similar story, half million dollars for ambulances. Can we get an explanation and a why for that?
I'll take it if you want me to, but I'll let you speak on behalf of it first.
Yeah, so that five hundred thousand was absorbed in the previous year with ARPA funds as well.
Yep.
If you remember, commission approved fund balance to be, so we could go ahead and preorder because there's a delay. But we have four ambulances on order. That's from this past year. And the word I got today, we're probably not going to receive those ambulances until sometime after January. Because Chevrolet has not released them to have chassis delivered. And so that's the delay there. That five hundred thousand there is, we're going to be in that same boat next year in order to replace ambulances. Current status on units is, we have thirteen total units that are licensed and operable for Jefferson County. We currently have, based on mileage now, we have six of those that are over two hundred thousand. Actually, all of them are over two hundred and fifty thousand miles, or right at two hundred and fifty thousand miles currently. By the time we receive these four new ones, based on our normal operating mileages, averages, we will have nine units over that two hundred thousand mark. Four of those with over three hundred thousand miles, three will have two hundred and fifty plus, and two over two hundred thousand. So that's kind of why that money's there. Obviously, we're, we're not going to receive those four ambulances until we're in the middle of this next budget year. That money's going to have to be reserved over, and over, those POs have already been let. And so that's kind of where we're at.
You said that is four, I believe?
So by the time we reach that point of receiving those ambulances, we'll not only have those nine, which we'll replace four of them, over that two hundred thousand mark, the rest will be over a hundred thousand miles at that point.
Are these all completely new units, or can you, or are you doing remounts?
Those are all completely new units that have been ordered. So those will be new units that come in. We could certainly.
Well, the five hundred thousand you're asking for, those haven't been ordered.
No, they have not.
Can you do remounts on those?
We, we can certainly entertain that option. I can tell you the remount market right now is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per unit.
What's a new box?
That's without any equipment on it. So the, the new ambulances have new, obviously new stretchers and new power load system. That, that expense would stay with the remount as well. So you're not saving a whole lot of money. I mean, talking tens of, ten to twenty thousand dollars per unit is all you're saving by doing a remount. And you, that's, that's a reused box, which we can't control.
What would be wrong with it, that you couldn't remount it one dime?
Well, so we don't currently have any boxes that, the, the ones we were replacing have been remounted once already. These that have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles, some of those were remounts we bought in those years to save money in those years.
The hydraulic lift assist equipment, is that necessary every time you get a new ambulance, or can you reuse it?
We had reused several of those past their life expectancy. We currently, but we've, we've done that over the years to save the cost as well.
Okay.
So we're, we're in the process of replacing stuff that was, has a seven-year life expectancy. And then after that, they will no longer issue the maintenance plan on them, so it costs us more to maintain them. But we've kept some of those for ten and thirteen years that are on some of those ambulances. What I can tell you is, I, I know you're up against a wall, okay? The understanding would have to be, we're, we're going to receive four ambulances in this next budget year. What we may have to do is if you, if you decide as a group to cut these ambulances out, you have to understand what we're going to be up against toward the end of that year. And how are we going to manage foreign ambulances for the next year, just like we did this year?
Don't get me wrong, nobody, please don't. I'm all for having good equipment for emergency services, EMS, sheriff's department, fire departments. I'm just looking to save whatever we could, like, like you said, we're up against them.
I, I, I understand that. So I'm, I'm telling you, we're, we're going to receive four ambulances and it's going to be in this next budget year. And so when we approach the end of next budget years, looking forward to the next year for ambulances that we're going to have to replace, because obviously we're, we're not going to be able to order ambulances and receive them, additional, two more ambulances in this next budget year. If you cut that money out, just, just understand, I'm going to have to come back to you at some point, we're going to have to try to decide how we place that order for those, those next ambulances.
Yeah, and we don't want to get in a situation where we have to buy eight new ones in one year.
That's, that's what I try to avoid with our replacement schedule. A typical ambulance currently lasts us about six years. It'll last about two and a half years as a frontline unit and about four years or so as a backup unit on our replacement schedule. Our oldest unit right now is a two thousand seventeen, but it has two hundred and sixty thousand miles on it currently.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
You've got any more questions for Mr. Brad?
No.
Is your question for Mr. Brad?
Director Phillips, you, you just talked about your replacement schedule. Can you go into that like you shared with me the other day? You got your two year where a number of ambulances are considered frontline because they're new or under two hundred thousand miles. Then from after two hundred thousand, you go into another money problem because they have to be inspected. I think you told me every couple of months or every twenty thousand miles?
Once, once they pass twenty or two hundred thousand miles, we, our mechanics have to inspect them. So that's added expense on their department, not necessarily on mine. But obviously Eric and them have to inspect them more often, if, every twenty thousand miles. But it more boils down to our replacement schedule is based on how we see the life expectancy of that unit. I, I promise you, if I, if I take you out here and I put you in a brand-new ambulance, laying on that cot, riding down the road, trying to get you to the hospital, it's a whole lot more comfortable than one that's a hundred thousand miles or less. It's a whole lot safer, even though our, our, our people do a good job, they're replacing front ends every, you know, sixty, sixty to eighty thousand mile on those things. So they keep them fairly safe. But I mean, our replacement schedule is, is based on that years of experience of, of how well they operate and how well we maintain them, so.
Thank you, Director.
Any other questions for Mr. Brad? Thank you.
Page twenty-seven, fire departments, nonprofit occupancy tax. Safe Harbor Child Advocacy Center. Sure, they're a great organization. We all, we started funding Safe Space last year, so I move to reduce funding for Safe Harbor from ten thousand to zero.
Safe Harbor Child Advocacy Center, that's his motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for like a second.
Chamber of Commerce, I move to reduce their funding from thirty-two thousand, five hundred to zero.
Chamber. Mr. Dockery, Mr. Douglas? Is there any discussion? Would you like to hear from the chamber? All right, motion on the floor. Roll call vote.
Chairman Scarlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Snodgrass?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Solomon?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dockery?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You want to stop here or you want to keep going?
Keep going. We'll stop in just a few minutes.
Uh, page thirty, solid waste sanitation, probably a similar story, but other salaries and wages showing a thirty-seven thousand dollar increase.
Now what? We've already, now we've already passed that budget. I mean, we can go back and look at that budget.
Oh, no, no, I tried, I forgot.
But you're in a different budget now.
We stick to the agenda.
We're on one-on-one.
This is one sixteen, not meeting.
Let's take, let's stay on one-on-one for.
I'm done. That's all I got.
All right, anybody else got anything to say here before we recess on one-on-one? I can do that in my head.
I want it down to the penny.
Anybody else got anything before we recess? We stand in recess. Do not.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, a special call voting meeting of Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. Roll call. Eighteen present, three absent. Next, we will have Mr. Joe Coleman with the prayer, followed by Mr. Sammy Solomon with the pledge.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, trusting in you to guide us what decisions that we make for the benefit of our county. God, we thank you that you brought us here together to do the county's business this evening. We pray, God, that everyone would feel welcome, that everything would be done decently, in order, according to your word. Now, we just ask your blessing upon the ones that can't be here, or are sick and afflicted. Be with the ones, Lord, that are in the places where the war is going on tonight. Protect the little nation of Israel, Lord, in her turmoil. We ask these things in Jesus' holy name, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. First thing on the agenda is parents and citizens, if anybody else wishes to speak, we only have one. I think that's the record. Mr. Mike Foley, sir, would you please come and take a stand, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, good evening. I'm Mike Foley, 318 Opus to Drive in Dandridge, and I'm providing citizen input on behalf of David Seal, 730 Sam Martin Road, Dandridge, who is out of town. Mr. Seal comments as follows. With Jefferson County Schools about to receive local, state, and federal appropriations for the next fiscal year, I would like to point out that Jefferson County Schools has executed a new contract with Allied Behavioral Health Solutions, extending their service period. I believe the county commission should ask the director of schools a few simple questions that are related to Allied's ideology that is now firmly within the school system. The taxpaying public deserves to hear answers to these questions because Allied has advertised its transgender-affirming ideology on social media, webpages, and job postings. As proof, you have received multiple copies of these images over the past two years. Written questions are being provided to you, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Right, sir. Next on the agenda, we have budget amendments. Budget Chair, Mr. John Neil Scarlett.
Yes, sir. Our county budget amendments. 101, number 25, item 1. This is to move the money back. Found out that it was, should have stayed. We had already voted to move it, this is in opioid abatement. From Fund 121 to 101, and you'll see another one that coincides with this here shortly. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, leave, roll no.
Mr. Chairman, please note Commissioner Johnson for call, because he serves on that committee, please.
Sure will, thank you.
Second Amendment, General Fund 101, Amendment 26. This takes seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighty-four cents of fund balance. We've got some juvenile issues with court, county clerk, title and fee, and then we're, we eliminated all of the off time and other time. This is funding overtime. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question?
Mr. Brooks, this is for the jail, right? The overcome, is this for the jail?
Yes, it would be deputy's jail, whatever.
This is everyone in all of, through the general fund. So it includes juvenile court, civil defense, school conservation, includes the finance department, trustees department, county buildings, elections.
I should have abstained from that originally.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Scarlett. Is it, are we moving seventy-four thousand or fifty-four thousand?
We're using seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighty-four cents of fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Any one else question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, leave, roll no. Sir?
Opioid abatement, 121, Amendment 5. This is the other side of the person who did, plus also receiving the funds from State of Tennessee into expenditure for the fiscal year. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Seventeen zero. One extension for cause. Sir?
Highway Fund 131. One of the new trucks, it's costing a little more in insurance. We also have short on charges for the trustees commissions to run a little low, so amended out of blasting funds. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Eighteen yes, zero, no, zero abstain. Sir?
141, Amendment 21. Summer camp programs, camp transportation grants, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Eighteen yes, zero, no, zero abstain. Sir?
142, Federal Funds, Budget Amendment number 10. This is a reduction from the allocation from Tennessee Department of Education, and the corresponding other stuff that comes in with the reduction on this. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Mr. Brooks?
Did you go into a little more explanation on that, Ms. Scarlett?
Let me let Ms. Jessie.
Okay.
So, item one is reducing the amount that we, we were allotted a certain amount at the beginning of the school year, and then we received a grant reallocation after they did a audit, as did all the other school districts in the entire state of Tennessee. So, that is reducing our Title 1 on item 1. It's adjusting items 2 and 3, as well as items 4 is moving funds to cover additional state retirement that we needed on that line. Item 5 is adjusting it to apply, to align with E-Pla, that is my DEA Part B grant. And item 6 is moving funds over, or bringing in additional funds and moving them to the medical insurance line.
Thank you.
Right you. Anybody else? Proceed to vote. Eighteen yes, zero, no, zero abstain. This will conclude this special call meeting. Motion to adjourn, be the way.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, and remind the budget committee, do not leave.
Budget committee, do not leave, your meeting will proceed shortly.
I've had a question, Ms. Jessie, if you would, before we start back into this. Would you address the personnel list, what is in the budget and what is not?
I can, would you let me do roll call first?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Scarlett?
Here.
Mr. Norton?
Here.
Mr. Patterson? Coleman? Mr. Snodgrass?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Solomon?
Here.
Mr. Douglas? Apologize, I was supposed to use this. Commissioner Dockery?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
We have 10. Let me pull up the personnel real fast, so I can, I can go over that with you all. Okay, so the top portion shows the positions that Personnel Committee voted on and they approved. That includes property assessor, and that is a full-time position. Did you all want me to go individually?
Yes, go down through there and explain what's in and what's not.
Absolutely. So, the property assessor is a full-time position. The salary will be forty thousand dollars. We've included benefits for that. So, the estimated salary total with benefits is sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. This was approved this current fiscal year, 2324, as a temporary full-time position, as you may. Now, Ms. Gass, my understanding, has the parcels that allow her for an additional staff. My understanding, there is a TCA code out there. Once there's so many parcels in a county, she has to have so many people in her department, and I'm sure she could speak more on behalf of that, but that is my understanding. So, this is to make that temporary part, or temporary full-time person that's this fiscal year, it is to bump their salary up to the regular salary amount that's within her office and for their requirements, and to make that a permanent full-time person. The second is soil conservation, and that is what Mr. Oh.
Hang on just a second on that one.
Just to make it clear, it's perfectly clear, this position is required by law. Is that correct? This additional position is required by Tennessee state law, so it's not really an option at this point. Is there an option to add, invest capital into a software that may reduce the labor requirements overall in, in the department?
We already have a new program called Impact that has broken reused. It involves all the time, it does more and more and more each year, so. But it doesn't major houses. A lot of reconstruction, if it's really stretched, my personal opinion.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Has this been voted on yet in Budget Committee?
Is this?
It has not, it is included in your 101. The one part of the highway for two-part time has been voted on because the Highway 131 budget has been approved.
So, it's in the budget. It is in the budgetary figure, what she's giving you right now is within the budgetary figure that we're lacking. But the budget has not been voted on, so these are not approved because the budget is not approved.
But there will be an opportunity to, well, let me, her go through the list.
Okay, this next one is soil conservation. This is the, another temporary full-time that was approved for this current fiscal year, 2324. And this is what Mr. Jessie was speaking on behalf for his soil conservation position. And this is to keep that position for this year, make it a full-time, permanent position. This is offset with funds that we receive from the state. And so, the total net effect for keeping this position is thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This position was approved by, and recommended by the Personnel Committee. The second one is the Health Department, or the third one, I apologize, is the Health Department, is a full-time position, and this is completely offset with a grant. It is zero cost to the county, and you'll see that under the offset portion of seventy-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Any type of grant positions that are filled, those are based upon grant funds. So, if the grant funds do not continue for the next fiscal year, they will have to, if they choose to keep it. They'll have to go through the process and request this position through Personnel, and again, through Budget at that point. The fourth item is a building inspector. This is a part-time position. Twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents is the hourly rate. And this cost with associated benefits, which includes Social Security and Medicare, will be twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. The fifth item is for the trustees office to add a part-time position at nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents for an hourly rate. The total net effect that will cost the county is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The next item is ag extension. This is adding, it's increasing hours for a current part-time position that they already have. It's increasing at five hours per week. And the total cost for the county is four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The next item is the two part-time positions for the Highway Department that has already been approved with the Fund 131 Highway budget for next fiscal year. And the last item is just for your information, Personnel Committee did recommend and approve a job description. There's no budget for it, it's just the job description, I just wanted you all to be aware, for a codes enforcer. So, the grand total for your General Fund 101 effect out of all these positions is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. The list that you have below are the, are the positions that were not approved by Personnel Committee on March 25th.
Yes, sir.
We get just a couple questions here. The soil conservation position, could Mr. Jessie come up and speak to us a little bit about what's going on there? Yeah, yes, sir, please.
Yeah. All right, let's see, what, is there another microphone? Give him another microphone, let him just come, come right up here. Yeah, just come out here in the middle, so everybody can see you. What's your question?
Just tell us a little bit, same as last year, tell us a little bit about what's going on, what kind of revenue you bring to the county, what you're doing.
Well, since I got hired in September, we have, between state and federal grants, a little over 1.3 million dollars has been paid out, or is going to be paid out, in this county this year. And we have about 1.4 million dollars in applications sitting there, waiting to be submitted to the state or the feds, and to be funded through them. So, almost 2.8 million dollars since September, that I've been able to get funded or applied for.
Could you share what that money, what kind of, you know, other contractors, water lines, all those things that help the economy churn?
So, that, that fund will be used for going for contractors? They'll be going toward contractors, having water lines installed on farms, fences, wells, access roads. So, you'll have different contractors, from grading contractors, plumbing contractors, fencing contractors, electrical contractors, all being funded through these funds. There's also been, a little over fifty-three hundred acres have been affected by these. So, Ben would improve fifty-three hundred acres of farms in this county.
Any other questions for Mr. Jessie?
What we're asking for is to bump my salary up to twenty-one dollars an hour, which is the state average. Currently, right now, I'm at fifteen eighty-seven, and the, the state gives seventeen hundred and fifty dollars every month for that salary. So, the county's not paying the full salary. Right now, the county's paying about five seventy-seven an hour for me. And with that raise, I'd put the county at ten dollars and ninety, ten dollars and nine cents an hour, plus the benefits. and with that raise, it'd put the county at ten dollars and ninety, ten dollars and nine cents an hour, plus the benefits.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Just leave that mic right there, please, thank you.
I'll nail one more. I don't know who owns this one, but the Building Inspector. The mayor?
That would be the mayor.
Uh, just because I don't know, could you share with us, Mayor, what's driving that additional need?
We have one.
Yeah, I can't see you, but I mean, I don't trust you.
It's mutual.
I figured it was.
We have one Building Inspector, and I can't go into retirement question-type things, but looking into the crystal ball, we, we might need to be training someone. So originally asked for a full-time, dropped it down to a part-time. I'd say impact on the budget, it'll probably later in the year. It's gonna be hard to find somebody that's willing to do part-time, but kinda with, with the nugget that if they start part-time in the future, they could be a full-time position. Right now, if Rob's out, we don't have a Building Inspector, and as you know, we have a lot, lot of home inspections. I'd hate to think if he were to be out for an extended period, for some reason, how that would, how that would sit with our developers and builders and everybody in the county. It's not necessarily required that we have this, it's just an issue that I saw in the county that could be a potential problem at some point in time if we lost, lost our Building Inspector. So this was just trying to prevent if maintenance maybe, you know, try to get somebody in that position, so. But we will work with whatever you provide us with, that's no problem, so.
Just, do we have any other, any other positions in the county that are held by one single person that could be suddenly vacated?
Uh, Zoning Officer, TM Seals, Environmental. Last year, or year before, we hired a second full-time environmentalist, so we've got a backup plan there. But zoning, we don't have anybody there, but I, I think we could function in zoning because we have enough people familiar with the zoning rules that can provide the answers and stuff, and our zoning officer's not been out for long periods of time, hopefully not. But Building Inspector, they, it takes, and somebody have to help you, they gotta do a footer inspection, they've gotta do two, three, four inspections, and I, I mean, you just can't, we, we just don't have a backup plan at this time, so.
And it takes a period of time to get certified for each of those.
No, in the job description, it's written that they have two years to receive their certification, and you know, if we suddenly didn't have a Building Inspector, somebody would still take them two years unless they're already certified. And I don't think our numbers are up there to where somebody would leave a department already employed. I, I don't know, Jim, it's, it's just, it's just something I see out there, and we, we could say that we wouldn't hire somebody until after January to start looking then, that would be less of an impact. But, you know, eventually down the road, it's gonna be in the budget, or it's a, I understand where we're at financially, but I understand where we're at operationally, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second. Any more questions for the Mayor? Uh, one question, Mayor. Have you thought or spoke to, in this position, some, based on what Mr. Snodgrass has said, some cross-training and some stuff, filling stuff?
Theoretically, I can tell you what, what I see the division that ought to be down there is we, we have people that are near my age, and I, I know where I'm at, so. I would hope that someday there would be one Department Director for three departments. You've got Building, Zoning, and Environmental. Instead of having three Department Directors, have one, and have the people under that director cross-trained as much as possible, or at least cross-trained two ways, and it'd just be one functioning department with less, less supervisor or administration involved, and more people out on the ground. We're not there, but just, just to be straightforward, that's the direction I see we need to go as a county, to have one department to handle all that. That's it.
Any other questions for the Mayor? Thank you.
If you're not, they'd be interested, I'd certainly have to talk to them.
Uh, question, Ms. Jesse, how many hours did you say that the Trustee's Office was requesting?
Twenty per week, that's what my sheet says.
Yeah, that's based off of twenty hours per week for the entire year.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this, or any other, what's the pleasure of the committee?
Are you open to motions?
Yes, sir.
I have a few. Uh, Trustee Office, part-time position, net effect, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I move to cut that to zero.
I second it.
Mr. Dockery, Mr. Reed. Motion to cut the Trustee's Office Personnel to zero. Or the, the ask.
Yeah.
The ask, I'm sorry. The ask for the additional person to zero. Let me get this straight, so I don't, you hear me, Steve? I'm trying to straighten it up. All right, motion's been made in proper seconds or in discussion. Seeing numbers, seeing the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Okay. Maintenance Garage, Eric's gonna hate me if he doesn't already, but we're all hopeful, I think, we're gonna add to his building this year, add another bay or two. Uh, when that's completed, he'll for sure have more room to work. We've already heard that we're, we, we got four new ambulances coming, we're gonna order four, getting new patrol cars. So he has a request in for a part-time and a full-time, at least for this year. I'm willing to look at it to full-time next year when we get the building done, but I vote to cut out the full-time, no?
The, you've not got, the Maintenance Garage is not in.
Oh, okay. Need one of them?
Personnel did not recommend either of those positions, so they're not included in.
Do I include, only the top, only the top ones that she talked about are included in your budget?
I'm working off my old sheet.
Okay.
But I have one more, that's it. Uh, Soil Conservation, there's a eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollar net effect to increase the pay for one of the employees, which I understand, I heard good things about her. It bumps her up to eighteen dollars an hour, which I.
Soil Conservation?
Yeah, Soil Conservation.
That's at the bottom where Personnel did not recommend it.
It's at the bottom, it's not in.
I know.
Okay.
I moved, put it in.
Okay. Just checking. All right, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for like a second. Anybody else? Any other, what's the pleasure on this sheet while we're on it? You wish to cut, add?
Are all these in there, Jesse?
Only the top ones.
Well, that's why I mean, these, she just, like, we just, we just went over, those are in there.
Those are actually built into your budget as we stand right now.
And the trustee's out.
The trustee was just taken out.
So, so we've reduced the shares vehicles by two. Um, we've removed the Chamber of Commerce and the trustee part-time position, so now we're at a deficit of three million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
What was the total reduction on those two shares vehicles?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Both of them, okay.
So give that figure again, Ms. Jesse.
Three million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
What's the pleasure of the committee? What's the pleasure of the committee? About a penny?
Yeah, a penny, a current penny value is about a hundred and thirty-six thousand, I think, two hundred dollars is what we budget, so.
And just remember that the pennies will absolutely change, but the number we're working with, three million, six hundred and thirty-nine, six fifteen, that's the number everybody needs to remember. It's not really that important about the penny. We just got to come up with the money or the cuts. What's the pleasure of the committee? Do what? You making that as a motion?
I'm making a motion to not do the Building Inspector, uh, new position.
Second.
Motion's.
Make a motion to not do the new Building Inspector.
Second.
Ms. Norton, make some motion. Mr. Coleman, seconds. To remove that from the list, is that correct?
Please.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Dockery.
I, I know we're, you know, we're in a big hole, we're trying to cut. Going off memory, I think our current Building Inspector, Rob Wilson, I think his last report said there were three hundred and seventy-one new homes built in the county so far this year. Some amount of property tax will be generated from those new homes, and from what I understand from our property assessor, that additional revenue does not get counted in the state formula when they reset our tax rate. So, for example, not, not to, if each of those homes is, has a property tax rate of a thousand dollars, that'll be an extra three hundred and seventy-one thousand. I saw, there was, I believe it was Channel Eight, six-eight or ten-one, did a story on D.R. Horton Homes, and some of the problems people are having in other counties. And I think it's really important, we have a Building Inspector, and if Rob were to up and retire, we're in really bad shape. I'd love to support it for the money, but I can't.
Any other discussion?
If it, something happened to Rob, it takes at least two years to get a certification for that. It's not easy to find somebody who wants to do that. The last one I hired took almost a year to get, and took him almost two years to get his certification. They, that, and the more that they build, the, the folks that are waiting for an inspector to get out for a footer inspection, a structure inspection, it's gonna be paramount, that's gonna cause an issue with this county. As the mayor said, that he probably wasn't hired till after the first year, so it would probably be half of that, and if, if you find anybody that's suitable to do the job.
Let's speak on that again.
Let's, let's wait till anybody else wants to speak, and you can close on your motion. Anybody else want to make a comment, question? No, I'm gonna let Ms. Janet close.
Okay. As a Realtor, I'm seeing it slow, not a lot, but it is slowing down. We do, do still have people coming in from out of state, but not at the rate that we had before. And personally, of the people that I've sold property to, I haven't had any issues whatsoever with a Building Inspector being able to get out to our sites and do our inspections and, and move. I understand down the road, you know, this may become an issue as more and more people move in here. You know, it's not gonna completely stop, probably for another year or two, but I think we can do this later, rather than right now. Because we have other positions just like it that we could put backups in there for, but sometimes we just have to hang on until we have the money to do it.
All right, all those in favor, the motion, if you're voting to eliminate the position, raise your right hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Solomon, Mr. Coleman, Ms. Norton, Mr. Walker, Mr. Reed. Mr. Douglas, all opposed. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Dockery, myself. Motion passes, that is removed. What's the pleasure of the committee? What's the pleasure of the committee?
Jesse, if my calculator's right, that puts us at three million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one in the deficit now.
I like yours better, maybe I missed something. I'm, I'm in the deficit, three million, six hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Okay, I wrote your other number down wrong, must have. Say that again.
Three million.
Six eleven.
Six hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars.
What's the pleasure of the committee?
Can I ask a question? On the one about, on soil conservation, what I wrote down when we first heard about that, it was a temporary person going to full-time, but then when Mr. Jesse spoke, it was, he said something about it was for a pay increase for him. So are we hiring someone else for soil conservation, or are we just upping his pay?
His pay originally was based on one number. The pay that when he becomes this permanent full-time position.
So him just going temp to full-time?
Yes. And there's an offsetting, so you need to, to look at, there's an offsetting of twenty-one thousand dollars that the state funds for this position. What's the pleasure of the committee?
I'll make a motion to pass the rest of these as they are.
You're passing the Personnel sheet that we're looking at, is that what you're saying?
I've written them down, so let's make sure I wrote down what's correct. Property assessor, we have to have, because, the property assessor, we have to have because of the number of plots that she now has. Soil conservationist makes him temp to full-time. Health Department's getting a full-time person with a grant, but we'll decide later on if that grant goes away, if we take it, take that on.
No, it's, that's automatic. It's, if they're hired with a grant, they're paid for by the grant. If they come to us, it is another, that position, we're not responsible for funding, that grant has no requirement.
They'd have to come ask to be absorbed by us.
Yes.
So it's our choice then. And then ag extension, adding five hours. And then the two highway positions already been voted on.
Correct. Is there a second? Mr. Reed. Any questions about what we're fixing, we're fixing to quantify these into, they are already in your figure in the budget, but they're locked in on the budget with this motion. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Well, while I'm already deep in it.
can I ask a question about the maintenance garage? Where does that fall in with the two new bays that we were wanting to build? Is that already being approved?
That's in capital, and we, we approved, you might want to go over that, Ms. Jesse. We have some in reserve. We also have approved an additional two cents in capital, is that correct? And we told them that that's it.
So, so this, this current fiscal year, when we were doing this budget last year, we set aside equivalent to two pennies for this maintenance garage bays because I had a three-year plan for the additional two pennies, so we knew this would be coming in this year's budget. I have, I am using those reserves as well as the two pennies that we have designated for departments that have needs for capital projects. So that, therefore, they do have five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars budgeted, which is equivalent to the two pennies, which is their reserves for this fiscal year, and two pennies for next year, so it's four pennies that they're receiving for this project.
So we're continuing to save for them, not build?
But that is.
It's for a build.
Capital allocation for what they can spend.
So some of it we can pay for, and some of it we're going in debt for?
Not at all. The, the property tax, this capital fund one-seventy-one receives four pennies from our property tax rate. I guess maybe three years ago, we designated two pennies out of those four pennies to go towards departments that had capital needs that could not absorb that within their fund. So the first year, sanitation department, I believe we got a dump truck. The second year, which is this current fiscal year, the highway department, we were able to purchase them five fleet vehi- flight, say that five times. Five fleet trucks for them, for their department. And then the third, in the plan, the third year would be for the garage bays. So there's, there's no debt at all for this. Reserves are funds that we are setting aside that we have. And so this year, we've set aside funds for reserves. We're bringing that back into the budget to offset their expenditure cost for next fiscal year.
Okay.
So if you remember when we passed the capital budget, what we told them, that was it. That was the money. They had requested eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We sent it back, uh, two years. And I think Mr. Dockry made the motion for twenty-five thousand dollars for engineering drawings. That was allocated. Then we told them, here's what the money is. That's all we've got, that's all you've got to spend. If you can't build it for it, don't build it.
So do we know what amount of money is, is what's in the budget right now?
Mr. Eric, could you come speak to that if you've got any information?
I put some builders out to different places, champion builders, they come back with a proposal with a non-completed building. They come back with a structure minus doors, electric, air conditioning, all that, concrete for, right at two hundred and forty thousand. I spoke with Mr. Gout and local contractors, said he could do our concrete for fifty-four thousand. And then I had the, another gym, I reached out to him, E&amp;J Property Management out of Marstown. He says he can put our building in, turnkey job, minus heat, for under five hundred thousand. That's with us doing some work. I have worked, I have spoken to Mr. Gout, he's agreed to help us tear out that concrete that needs to be tore out, and I'll find out why, because they will not, no other company will structurally certify that concrete, that, that extra pad that's there. They will not structurally certify, that's why it wants, they, everybody wants it tore out, that twenty-foot pad. But the land builders agreed to assist us and is, work with us and help us any way they can.
This is a project that will have to be bid out, though.
That's what I thought, okay.
Those are just quotes that I've got for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snodgrass, I think he's got a question for you.
Hey, Eric, I should have asked this already, and I may have, and if I forgot, I apologize. Would this move all of your operating, remaining operations that are in the school, old school bus garage to this single site?
Everything we do now is already on this site.
Okay.
We're just adding, we're giving adequate workspace, more or less a healthier workspace, you might say, because instead of being everybody trying to work on top of everybody, it moves us, it gives us more room for parts. Because right now, all the, the school system that I do over there is stored. We store, we store, must hire, anything that has to do with the school system as far as big items like that, we do that completely storage, because there's not, over there technically, we have more room right now than what we would if we just tried to work over there in one spot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, first, Eric? Okay, thank you. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Look, I have a conversation at the libraries on the bottom there. I think from my understanding, they're direly for the, for this money, for these positions. I know the Jefferson City Library, and I assume the others do the same thing, do a lot of assistance to people, give jobs, do resumes, teach them how to use computers, to give them the ability to do online, and I know our personal money, the community's tree of development. I think they are providing economic development to extend to the libraries. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I'm looking to Jesse, because she probably knows more about that.
They would not approve that.
The state audit. They are auditing currently for the economic development, the hotel motel funds. I had a little heads up. Luckily, our county has done everything just like we should have. We've documented everything, so, so we're in good shape, but economic development, that might be a little, little stretch. I like the idea.
A for effort.
Keep them coming.
Well, I'm, I'm still going to make a motion to put those back into the budget, so I'll make that motion below number thirteen, number five there.
All right.
The libraries.
Where are we looking? I've, I've lost you, I.
On this sheet right here.
Okay, so what personnel did not recommend?
Yes. All right, Mr. Johnson has made a motion, sir, a second.
Can we hear from the library?
Not till we get a second.
I'll take it.
All right, Mr. Reed. Ms. Carol.
Do you, do you have questions? Do you, would you like for me to tell you why we have asked to increase our part-time hours and, and the pay scale? Well, first of all, let me share, share this with you. I get to keep the one I'm talking.
So like cheat sheet, you got to answer something?
Yes, you, you get to answer. You look at our computer and Wi-Fi usage. Forty-one thousand incidents or interactions, last year there were twenty-eight thousand, so. Library visits last year were fifty-seven, this is, this is for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm giving you, when I say last year, I mean the last full year before this one. Library visits, fifty-seven thousand, look where they are now, seventy-nine thousand plus. Those visits are folks who don't have internet or need to make a job application, and they're sent to the library. And they're given on a telephone call, how do I apply for this job? Go to this website. They don't have a computer, they don't have internet access. They go to the library and they say to our staff, who are highly trained and available if they're in the building, and properly staffed. Okay, let me show you how to do this. If you look at program attendance, last year, ten thousand some people, physical people, walked into the library and participated in an activity. Might have been a toddler, it might have been a teenager, might have been a mom with a, the reading group here and there and everywhere. That number is twenty thousand plus if you count the people who are accessing the library and the library programs online. So how do those programs get made? They don't get made by somebody like me who is technologically challenged. Those programs are created by people who work in the library, who have technical skills, people's skills, educational skills, and so on. This is what's happening in our libraries. The libraries are the center, they're the heart of a community. You know that. You know all of the activities that go on in these libraries. So, we have had some personnel issues in our buildings. We have had five employees, highly trained, skilled, technical people who have left the library because they had much greater opportunities salary-wise and benefits-wise. Couple of them went to the school system. The pay is, is inadequate to hire people who can deal with the public and the technology and all the requirements. This is not a person who, I could stamp the book and say, have a nice day. Maybe, if I could run the computer at the desk, but this is not what our library librarians do. So, that's the reason that we're asking for additional part-time hours. We're not asking for new positions. We're asking for an increase to twelve dollars an hour for our part-time people. Some of them make ten dollars and eighty-nine cents. I don't think there's anybody on the county payroll that makes less than that, and most everybody makes more. I have some figures if you need to see those. That's the reason. We have turnover, which is costly in training and service to the public, that's why we're asking for that. We also have a situation in a building where we're having more and more schoolchildren come for after-school programs. And when you have thirty middle schoolers or thirty fifth graders coming in after school, you can't have two people in the building and meet safety requirements. Somebody has a nosebleed, you can't have one person dealing with thirty people. That's why we're asking for additional hours in our buildings. And we started out with a proposal of twenty, let me see if I can get this right, twenty-five hours. And we have, feeling very sensitive about the budget crunch, have reduced that request to fifteen hours. Can't eat the elephant all at once, right? We thought if we would go to ten hours and five hours in these buildings that need these extra folks, that that would be more palatable, perhaps a more reasonable request to make our, to meet the needs. Stretched a little thin, but meet the needs. So that reduces our request significantly.
Any other question?
We have twenty-five hours on that sheet.
That's right.
So this, this is the first I've heard of fifteen. Apologize.
Well, actually, this is, this was about three o'clock this afternoon, so you would not have heard about that, I don't suppose. Let me share those numbers with you. Can I find the right page here? If we reduce the number of hours from twenty-five to fifteen, then the cost goes down from what's on your page to, and this includes benefits, twelve thousand, five hundred, forty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, if my math is correct. That includes Jesse eight point six-five percent benefit, social security, Medicaid, and so on, from those hours.
Mr. Reed.
Are the positions there, are they, do they cover all the libraries in the county, or is it just certain libraries? The ones that you're, you're cutting back to fifteen hours?
It, it would be the same buildings that needed the extra assistance, it's just fewer hours in, in those buildings.
I would like to just make a statement that, over the last two years, I've spent a lot of time up at Strawberry Plains Library, and I am sure it happens in the other libraries where, especially the children within our county are actually taught American history, respect of peers, respect of adults. They don't just look at the books. Some commissioners have came up and read to the children. And, you know, for years, we've always told the library no. And I think, even though we're extremely tight, I mean, as I've went through the budget, I see so many different places where it seems like we need to do some better things, and we can discuss about that, we can discuss maintenance agreements. One maintenance agreement went up ten thousand dollars a year. I think we owe it to our libraries, to the men and women who work there. I would say to approve the twenty-five hours you asked for, but I will change that to the fifteen that you asked for. I just think they're so important to the functioning of this county. Thank you.
Are you offering that as amendment?
For twenty-five?
No, sir, for the fifteen.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the fifteen hours.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Reed. Any other questions, Ms. Carolyn? Ms. Carolyn?
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple.
You have questions?
I do. How much have you gotten increased from the cities in the last four years? How much have you asked for increases from the city in the last four years?
We asked three years ago, and Jefferson City stepped up with a significant increase in their contribution.
Twelve thousand, ninety-five dollars.
Well, it's a hundred, twelve thousand, one hundred.
Twelve thousand, one hundred, that's fine.
Five dollars, yes, you know, we'll, I'll give you that. It's an interesting question when you talk about that, because ninety percent of the library space is paid for by Jefferson City, White Pine, is provided by Jefferson City, White Pine, and Dandridge. Did you understand that? Ninety percent of the floor space in those four buildings is subsidized, provided, maintained, cleaned, electrified, and in some cases, internet-connected by the contribution of the city. I call that in-kind contribution. If you look at the city contribution plus their cash, and you look at the county cash, and what they do at Parrot Wood, which is supported just by county funds, come up with a fifty-eight percent, forty-two percent county, city. Every year, we talk about that.
Do, do you know how much we've went up in four years?
Yes, I do.
How much?
I can't tell you. It's, I've got a piece of paper. You tell me.
Hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars.
And you're getting closer to a reasonable support.
And you have a maintenance. And you have a maintenance of every.
Congratulations, you're making progress, you're doing a great job. It's like saying, well, we keep going up on the fire department, but when your house burns down, you want your fire department to be available. And when you call the sheriff because you have an incident in your building, you want it to be available. It's a county service, and we are blessed to have three cities that have provided buildings, maintenance and internet and all that good stuff.
The debt service in Jefferson City is two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year. It's more than the county budget. It started in two thousand and fifteen, and it goes to two thousand and thirty-five, it's a twenty-year. It's a 20-year debt. So, the county, I mean, the city stepped up to build a state-of-the-art facility for the county. And for all...well, for all the residents of the county... What I'm trying to say, for all the residents of the county, we don't say you have to be a Jefferson City resident to come to that facility because we have Talbot, we have New Market, we have people from the whole county come there, and actually, some folks from other counties come there and use it too. But we welcome those folks.
But we didn't ask, the county didn't ask for it.
No.
So, the Jefferson City made that decision on their own to do that. Is that correct?
Because they wanted the better of the county and the culture of the county.
This is a topic that comes up every year when we talk about the libraries. I ask people, "Did you know that Jefferson County has four libraries where you can go?" It's not Jefferson City's library. It's their building, but it's Jefferson County's library. So is the one in White Pine. That's not White Pine's library. It's their building, and they have contributed the library so that anybody, anywhere in the county, and maybe somebody from Knox County if they want, can come to those libraries. They all have different flavors. One has a lot of genealogy, one has local history, one has a lot of...what am I trying to say? Historical, and so on. One has two of the finest meeting rooms in the county, which are available without cost. Am I correct? So...
Mr. Terry, and then we're going to wind this up.
I've got one question for you. But first, I will say I completely agree with Budget Chair Scarlett. Chose to build those buildings, and they chose to spend the kind of money they spend on those buildings. And as far as them providing 90 or 92% of the floor space, would you agree that those buildings in the cities are located inside the cities where it's convenient to the citizens of that city? I know it's open to everyone, but it's much more convenient to the citizens in that city than it would be, say, some folks from Parish Chapel or Chestnut Hill.
Well, maybe we should build a...ask the county to build a new library in Parrot's Chapel.
I asked you if you agreed with that statement.
I do not.
Why not?
The people who live way out in Chestnut Hill drive across a bridge and come to a library. Unless you want the convenience, then you don't... Either you build there, or you've got to go somewhere.
Do you agree that floor space the cities are providing are located where it's convenient for the citizens of that city?
I would say it's most likely provided for 75% to 80% of the population of the county.
We can move on. Let's hope.
If you look at this map, we've got four distinct corners of the county. I can get to Parrot Wood in 45 minutes from my house. I can get to Dandridge in seven, Jefferson City in 10, and White Pine in seven. So, no.
I'm impressed you can get from your house to Jefferson City in 10 with this traffic. I am impressed, Ms. Carolyn.
It's called the Brotherton Road.
Remind me not to ride with you.
All right, you don't have to.
Okay, we've got an amendment. Mr. Reed has an amendment to change it to 15 hours. Is there any other question or discussion on that amendment? Seeing numbers, seat to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Reed, Mr. Walker, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Dockry, Mr. Douglas, all opposed.
You can't vote twice.
Oh, yeah. It's getting late.
Early voting does not mean vote often and early.
Me, too, yes.
We're about the same age. Do you want me to let everybody know?
Ms. Norton, Mr. Solomon, Mr. Snodgrass, and myself oppose. Motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended. It would fund the library's positions, add those two into the budget at 15 hours instead of 25. Any discussion on that? Seeing now, all those in favor of the motion as amended signify by raising your right hand. Mr. Reed, Mr. Johnson, or Mr. Walker, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Coleman, all opposed. Or Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry. All opposed. Ms. Norton, Mr. Solomon, Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Dockry, and myself. Motion fails. Five to five. What's the closure of the committee? We are still $3,611,294. $3,611,294 from a balanced budget. What's the closure of the committee?
Can I ask a question? Jesse, you stated that our insurance for buildings went up 15%. What's the total cost of that insurance?
I want to clarify, make sure I understand your question. The total cost of the increase or the total cost that we pay for just buildings and contents insurance overall?
You said an insurance cost went up 15%. I would just like to know, what did you mean by that comment?
So, our buildings and contents insurance went up 15% is what I said. And that means we went from $171,360 on the General Fund 101 to budgeting $188,154 total.
Have we done any type of negotiation over the course of the last year for trying to get the best insurance rate? Or is it one that's...
I did last year.
You did?
That's why we're playing catch-up this year. They quoted me a 3% raise last year, increase. They quoted that in end of February. I held him to it. So, my understanding, a lot of counties received at least a 10% increase last year.
Okay, another question. As I've went through each one of these, because as you go page to page like Mr. Dockry did, I have a lot of question maintenance agreements. All the maintenance agreements throughout the county, do you have any idea what those amount to of estimated cost?
Hang on just a second. I'm looking it up. Maintenance agreements is our Object Code 334, increased 1%. They've increased $2,788 overall.
$2,000. How about within the departments that have their own maintenance agreements? Do you tie in with them and make sure that we're trying to get the best cost for them?
It's their responsibility to reach out and get a quote for any type of maintenance agreements that they have within their department.
I know, I talked to the 911 director, and he told me just one of his maintenance agreements. And he has expensive equipment that must be taken care of. And he said one maintenance agreement went up $10,000.
Would that be Justin Crowther?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I don't have his...his budget is not in our hands. We make a contribution to E-911.
I know it's separate. He's like a municipality. There are so many costs it seems like have went up this year that we really just...there's no way we can control it. So, it's kind of hard when you say, "What's the pleasure?" unless we go through each department, line by line, and say, "Hey, why has this went up?" Has every department in the county increased their budget? Or some of them at zero?
A lot of them try to remain at zero. If they move funds somewhere, they try to compensate in others.
And that's what I tried to look for. We're sitting here trying to figure out what the heck can we cut? We're just going to have to lay stuff out on the line, I guess, and vote on it. So, what's the next big item that's going to cost a lot of money to do? Would it be a cost of living raise?
So, I've given you the update. Let me get to it. It's in your packet.
$493.216, what you gave after adding 911.
And that is 3.2%. You have a kind of a General Fund 101 details. It's called Details of Importance. It's because of lack for a better title that I could give it. It just shows your use of fund balance, and then it just shows the totals through there. And I'm sure you've looked at it. But those are our main things that have affected the budget to adjust at that point. I do have a cost of living sheet here where I can tell you what each percentage would cost, if you're curious, if that's something you're looking at.
I think it's something that one of the biggest line items that we've got to deal with cost-wise, isn't it?
It can be. So, if you chose to do a 1%, we can just start there. A 1% is a little shy of $155,000. And this is just for General Fund 101 only. 2% is $308,260. I'm sorry, that's a 2%. Did I say 2?
Yes.
Sorry, it's getting late. 2% is that. A 3% is around $462,400. And then the 3.2 is $493,216. I'll be happy to give you more than a 3.2, but I imagine that's not the direction you're heading.
That would be nice, but a big imagination, okay?
Sure.
So, we've already approved some of the budgets with a 3.42% already included, right?
We have approved those budgets, but they are contingent on what we do.
What we do with this.
Normally, what we have done in the past is we have given the same amount through all budgets, once we decide what that is. But we did approve it because their budgets were balanced.
I would like to hear ideas on what we think our employees should receive for this fiscal year. You know, and then I've looked. Of course, there's nothing we can do about elected officials. They got a straight 5% budget. But I assume that a lot of our county employees are thinking about, "Well, they got a 5% budget, a 5% increase, and we're looking at a 3.2." And I know I'd like to, and I'm going to ask this to our elected representatives at the Senate and the House, when is the state going to start helping us to pay for the elected officials? Because it seems like every year they get a very nice pay raise when our employees, as we've heard very eloquently tonight, are way behind on pay raises. So, I guess I'll just go ahead and stick my neck out. I think our employees in this county, and we could discuss maybe not giving department head pay raises and just give it to the line employees. But I want to go ahead and put it before the body that I make the motion to approve the 3.2 cost of living allowance for the employees of Jefferson County.
Well, that's already included in the budget.
I understand, but I want us to vote on it. If I can give a second.
I don't think it's allowed, is it, to do that?
As far as your thing about the department heads not paying, you cannot do that. You have to pay the employees.
I just threw it out, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm looking at every which a way possible.
I like it, but I don't think we can do it, can we?
I'm just telling you, that one's not...
I've even thought about why don't we all just go win what we have to the employees of the county? I mean, if you... But I know I can't do that either.
They wouldn't get far on it, so...
I guess I can just pretty good at stirring the pot. I don't know.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir, I did.
So, would you repeat the motion that you're making?
I make a motion that we vote on, the 3.2 cost of living allowance for the employees of Jefferson County, Tennessee.
Is there a second? You can't...you cannot separate them by law. It has to be our...
The only thing you can do is...this includes all full-time and part-time, 3.2%.
Right.
So, you can't necessarily pick and choose departments, especially in a motion like that. And I think he understands that. But you could potentially do something different for full-time versus part-time. That's the only really option you have.
Of the almost $500,000, how much is the dollars on the part-time in that? You hear that broke out?
It's a good question. Hang on, I can see if I have it.
Is there a second to Mr. Reed's motion? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Go ahead.
Just a question for you, Ms. Jesse. Are there any type of reserve funds that have been set aside that we can pull in to help absorb one-time ADA, hospital funds? Any of those things we've set aside that came out?
Well, you all, I mean, it's its discretion of the committee to pull ADA funds. But now you've committed it. I don't know, Ms. Jesse would have to...
I don't see any projects in here. That would be under our Capital 171, and we're not proposing any type of ADA project.
Right. And what we recently...on that one specifically, we first came out with 2035 was our deadline to fix whatever. Some of that has been done.
We are using ADA reserves for that.
Now, that's been wiped out. I believe what you shared with this mayor, that there's no end date on that. There's no hard deadline on that now. And reality is, like, we took care of some of it at the White Pine Emergency Center. We took care of some of it with the new county clerk building. We wiped that out, which also reduces some of the demand on your facility. Not all of it, there's still some things. But which brings us back to if we can use it. Ms. Jesse, how much is in there?
The ADA reserve?
Yes.
Hang on, I have a balance sheet. Let me look real fast.
Roughly, roughly. It's over $1 million, I believe, we set aside.
So, ADA, you had to turn in a plan to come ADA compliant. And county commission set that 2037 date out there. That was self-done by us. So, you have...we have an architect that's hired. It's an ADA architect now. They do the drawings, they do the bid process, and they oversee the project. So, they are systematically drawing, going to present all the ADA needs because we did, was to study. What we...we had a contract come in.
$136,000.
Came in and looked at all our buildings. And then when we thought we were in good shape, but it wasn't bid documents, and we didn't have drawings. So, then we hired an ADA architect, and he's overseeing the project. And he's in the process of drawing these things to come in to bring all county buildings to ADA compliant. So, we've done some things that helped. Health Department's almost done up here. Make one match on ADA, you're pretty good. He's also doing something on the courthouse. I don't know what that's going to come back at. I know Mr. Dockry talks about it. So, he's doing some drawings and trying to get some bids on what to do on the courthouse. The other one, I...what else we got, Dave? We're working on it. Courthouse. So, we're working to it. So, I don't know about the funds. I don't know where we're at because we never had a document that really estimated what the cost was. It's more like a guesstimate.
We had a document, but...
But it was when we started, you know, since we did that...
We weren't told if that was a guesstimate, were we?
And then everything kind of went up in price, you know, so...
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Dockery?
Yeah, well, I think it was about, the list, the money that's appropriated right now does not provide funding for everything that needs to be done. So, there will be additional funding for additional items once these are completed. The money was approved, I think, around four years ago. Is that about right? And as the mayor stated, the way it was approved, every project, let's say there's a bathroom at this building, needs ADA work. There's a guesstimate we're hearing, or an amount of money signed to it. And commission approved for the finance director, if the bid comes in at or under that amount of money, does not have to come back in front of commission, they can pay it. So, in the past four years or so with this inflation, I doubt there's nearly enough money in what we appropriate. I don't know that any of those projects are going to come in without that, under the amount provided. So, once all the bids are in, I would assume the facilities committee will have to go back through the list and trim down a number of projects that they feel I can't do the same amount of money. Okay.
So, I found it. We are currently doing, like you said, four projects right now. And so, our balance was nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. With those four projects, after bidding it out, we're a little shy of five hundred and fifty thousand. In 2019, the commission designated for priority one and two from fund balance, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that's where majority of the chunk came from. There was, looks like around three hundred thousand dollars remaining at that point when they made that motion. And the other amount came from fund balance as well. So, it has been designated for ADA.
So, what's the total amount available in that?
On the ADA reserves?
Yes, ma'am.
Five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay, so, I, and I'm not making a motion to, I'm just trying to do a discovery process here. What other funds or reserves out there might be available to assist us with this process?
Hospital is not, because we've not reached the threshold, I don't believe, Ms. Jessie.
How does that work? Can you tell me like in a short?
It is a, the hospital fund was set aside, and once we reach ten percent of our budget in that fund, we can access the, the interest, I mean, the...
Anything over.
Anything over that, I guess I should say, what's coming in.
Oh, you said that fund. What's that fund?
The hospital reserve. And that, that's where the lease payments have resided, are residing. That has went up, what is it, eight hundred and some thousand, I think, goes in it right now. But we have to get, it has, that fund has to build to ten percent unless the commission deems it so necessary that they have access it for capital. Tornado blows courthouse down, whatever.
By ambulances?
No. Well, they can, I guess, but it has to...
Hospital, ambulances, it works for me.
It has, it has to be a capital project. The commission can access it by a vote of two-thirds. Do what? Has to be an emergency. Something like a tornado, storm, whatever. They can access that.
It's an emergency. We got the money here and money there, and we can't touch it. It's driving me nuts.
It has to be accessed by a vote of two-thirds majority on two consecutive meetings by the commission. But it is accessible, but it's, it has to rise to high standard. Mr. Dockery?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's no, no other fund available, a reserve available that can be borrowed from or transferred from other than ADA?
Most reserves that we have are either restricted or committed, which would be committed by you all. But the reserves that I would look at would be what the, the fee offices collect. They, those funds are for them to use with in their department. So, anything that they are needing in their department above and beyond what we allow in their budget, those are when you see budget amendments that we amend in. I cannot require them to use their reserves since that is for their department. I can't think of anything off the top of my head to what fee offices have requested above and beyond just their needs in their department at this point.
So, answer was no.
Essentially, no.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask another one. You and Jessie may not like, but how would the comptroller's office feel about us pulling that five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of ADA money into the budget to reduce our deficit? And then us replace that money from fund balance?
Those ADA funds were committed by the county commission. So, county commission can move those reserves to use for whatever they want. There's no restriction on those funds. That's just what the county commission designated. There was a motion. So, county commission would need to vote on that to change that.
Well, I move that we recommend the commission that we use that five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, whatever the exact number is, move it from ADA to wherever you see fit in the budget and replace the ADA, ADA money from fund balance.
We would just offset it in the revenue side. So, so you want to just move the entire amount?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Just moving this problem this year to next year or the year after, whenever it shows up. We need to deal with the expenses, we need to deal with the revenues.
I agree, but maybe we don't have to take the whole hit in one year.
I got a question for Mr. Longmire. Have you got anything that is committed or is, that this would impact when you do this?
I'm just sitting there thinking about it. If you're going to replace it out of fund balance, I think we can work with it later on, Jessie. But they are doing drawings in the, the main plan on this building here. They also like that building over there. And maybe, I think the EMS building is, is all right. Other, other than, other than the White Pine.
Now, he's right, that's my motion. It's just on paper, we move ADA to revenue.
I understand, I just don't want to, I'm just asking for informational purposes. Does this cause an issue with something he's got that he's got to pay for or kind of? Because we don't meet again until our meeting, and you can't transfer the money.
Until commission.
Let me go back over this again. We got White Pine EMS, that's number one. Finance and the annex, health department and the justice center. That's, that's five places, but it's four projects. And the architect, you know, and he is working on this drawing here.
That's what I'm asking, before our next commission meeting in July, is there something you have to pay or will have to pay or will be obligated to?
We have that money already set aside. The bids are already out, and we're waiting on the contracts to be, I mean, to, they're signed, and we're waiting on the meetings with each one to implement it.
The way I see it, we're just make, agreeing to make this recommendation to full commission. So, he can continue paying bills, I think, as he is, until it goes in front of commission. Commission will say yes or no. And then the next day, once the money moves around on paper, he can still pay bills.
Well, the problem is where your, your budget will be the thirtieth. It's the thirtieth? The budget, when do we pass the budget? June twenty-fourth, okay. June twenty-fourth.
I don't think it's going to be a hinters, John, dude.
Okay.
But now you know me enough to know that I want to ask for more money than what's left.
But the second, you don't, you'll not move this money until...
About a week later.
Well, to your third month of July. So, I just, I'm just asking for the logistics, because Ms. Jessie and the finance department will have to handle that.
We said it all the way out as one group, and we're thinking it's going to be it. So, we had to back up and foot each project as a single, single group. And that did cause a little bit of more drawing for him, more bidding work for him, and more contract work for him. So, that kind of went over still a bit, but I think we're covered.
So, when you say POs are out, are they obligated because of five forty-eight? Are they already...
That's what's remaining is the five hundred and eighty. Yeah, we've already moved the funds, as long as the architects have been, those funds have been in coverage.
So, there's actually more money there. You've, you've got your obligation on your POs, so that's the remaining balance. It's not committed, of course, you're saying.
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on the motion? The motion is, Mr. Dockery, is to take five forty-eight, five fifty-five, move it into the budget, and then turn around and replace it after the budget year starts out of the fund balance. Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. Everybody understand what you're voting on?
And Jessie, you're okay with taking fund balance out to replace these funds?
Please repeat that.
So, we're, we're taking five forty-eight, putting in the budget to help balance it. But then we're going to turn around after July one and take five forty-eight out of fund balance to replenish this money over here.
But it has three point seven million in it.
We cannot go ahead and make any type of motion for next fiscal year, especially since we do not even have a budget passed. We're not allowed to do any type of budget amendments for July first at this point. So, that would have to be before budget committee in July. I would probably be more comfortable at least waiting till the roll at that point. But it's at your pleasure.
So, are you saying we need to remove the second part of the motion?
I don't think I heard that second part.
Well, she do not have three point seven million in fund balance?
Currently.
Well, what she's saying is that we can't encumber the funds until after July one. So, the second part of your motion...
Well, yeah, but we had, I don't see that as an issue, because we agreed that he can still, it's not an issue for Longmire.
No, but technically, for the comptroller, she, we can't make the motion. She's saying...
The second part of the motion, we would have to wait till after July.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with taking that out if that's what we need to do.
So, my understanding this motion is to remove that these are committed for ADA reserves and that we're going to use these funds essentially would roll into fund balance. We're using these funds from fund balance? Because I can't show that we're using ADA reserves.
I'm going to revise, for now, the motion is just to pull the five forty-eight, whatever it is, out of ADA and into the, wherever you've seen, deemed fit in revenue. And I'll deal with, we'll deal with the other part of it, replace that money later.
Okay.
Are you good with a second of that?
Second, yes.
Okay. So, the motion is a singular motion now. Pulls the five forty-eight out, places it in revenue for this, in this year's, or in next year's budget. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Any questions?
I have a question. Do we, do we need to commit that to the, do we just need to commit it to the budget revenue?
You've got a, you've got a three point six million dollar hole. You can commit it anywhere in that hole, and it's a deep, dark hole.
She says she just had it to revenue in appropriate places.
She'll just take it from the tax increase. All right, so does everybody understand what you're voting on? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Myself and Mr. Solomon. Motion passes eight to two.
It's time. Angel sang.
What's the pleasure of the committee?
Nobody else has any, nobody else had any suggestions to cut or anything for now, then I move to adjourn.
Mr. Dockery moves to adjourn. Is there a second? Mr. Coleman? You have another meeting on May twentieth, third review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.